I know. Well, the good thing is when we did, redid the website, they, they gave us the list, yeah.
Okay. Hello, everybody. This is the Board of Selectmen meeting, regular meeting on Wednesday, December 13th, 2017. This meeting is being recorded, it'll be shown throughout the week, and it's also being shown live as we speak on Channel 9. With that, let's begin with the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're all standing, I would like to request a moment of silence in memory of Donna Leonard. Mrs. Leonard was the wife of Richie Leonard, who worked for the Highway Department and also passed away at a young age, a few years ago. So, in your honor, could we observe a moment of silence, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our condolences to the Leonard family.
Thank you.
We're gonna go a little bit out of order, so we can get you guys taken care of. So, why don't we, why don't we start with the, with Sam DeBois, who's gonna talk to us about his Eagle Scout project?
What picture is this time?
Is this the end?
This is the end.
The end.
That's awesome, Sam. Appreciate it.
Where was this?
This is up near School Street.
Volleyball court, the sand court, the beach sand court.
Yes. You can just, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. If I'm by that one, there's some pictures in the back, if you'd like to look at those.
Okay.
So, yes, so we completed the project, I believe it was August 25th or 26th of the summer. It went very successfully, I was very happy with it, and then the Parks and Rec administration decided to take on the basketball court themselves, so I was in charge of the volleyball court itself, which kind of differentiated from what our original plans was, which was to do both. We did, I'm trying to think of, sorry, I follow this. It went really well, though, we got over two, 213 cubic feet of sand donated from Lopes, $513 worth of lumber donated from Ozone in Taun, and just here and there, I got over 450 donations from companies around the town, stuff like that, so it went very successful. And we went, we established a means to winterize it, too. We put in some poles, there's actually that picture right there, of me putting in the cement, so the poles can be lifted out and then put, put away for the winter, so we were thinking that's something that maybe the Parks and Rec administration could do for us year in, and we'd give them the poles.
Great idea.
What's this beam with the big spike sticking out of it?
That is the frame, so those were four-by-four lumbers donated from Ozone, and so we hammered those into the side.
So, that holds the sand?
It, it just, it doesn't really, and I wouldn't say necessarily holds it, but it establishes, like, the boundary of the court.
But then you drive it into the dirt.
Right, right.
So, it's sticking up like that.
Yeah. So, that's, that's the finished project, right there.
Oh, the net, yeah.
Very nice.
Yeah, the net was actually donated from you guys, so I really appreciate it, it was a.
We don't get it there?
Parks and Rec probably do.
Oh. They're good, they're good.
Credit. Yeah, we did that.
How long did it take you to do that?
Only a weekend, it's two days, actually.
Really?
Two days, so we flew through it.
You chose your partner.
It took a lot more time to plan, but the actual construction of it.
So, it got used this summer?
Yes, it did, very fortunately.
With sand.
And we did accumulate some extra funds, and I was hoping to present that to the Parks and Rec administration to use in other types of projects, things like that.
Very nice, very nice.
So, there's actually a page folded tucked in on the left side.
Oh, okay.
And that is a signature that I require from you guys, just to submit my paperwork and get my Eagle Scout projects completed.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we vote to authorize you to sign Mr. DeBois' Eagle Scout project, the volleyball court at the North Playground.
Second.
Okay, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and I'll sign it.
Fantastic.
Is there a sign up there?
Uh, there will be, yes.
Okay.
We have some extra money, we're gonna do, like, a nice donation with all the people who contributed, and then, it's, I'm very excited.
And Parks and Rec's gonna help you with the sign, I know they typically help with the signage after the project is completed, so you'll work with them on that?
I believe so, yes, yes.
Is there anything else you need from the board?
I do not believe so.
Just our support?
Just your support, and your smiles.
Absolutely.
You know, I said it last week, when we had, we had a couple of Eagle Scouts here, but this program in this town is unbelievable, and we have parents that are so supportive and, and she'll be, she'll be very proud of it.
We were back and forth every day asking for donations.
Did you, did you get some, some help from your friends or anything?
Yes, I went to, actually, the National Honor Society in town, so they needed community service hours, so.
Good work.
It's an exchange of work, but I appreciate it, thank you guys.
We are very, very fortunate, and when I go out there and I coordinate a volleyball game, I'll be thinking, it is.
Thanks so much.
Thanks so much, Sam.
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
I'm very impressed with the Eagle Scout program here and the scale of the project, so I commend you, because it's very impressive.
Thank you.
Good job, well done.
Thanks very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You, too.
I can see how proud your mother is with a smile on her face. Okay, let's back up now. You don't have anybody here, right? Do you have any public input?
Town administrator.
I know, yeah.
Mr. Hey, he sunk in, I didn't see him.
Nice to see you. Okay, let's begin with the Town Administrator's report.
So, this week, Tom Ferry and I drove around, he showed me the three locations of sidewalk improvements for, that was, that were recently approved at a town meeting, so they are Somerset Avenue behind Giorgio's, the Center Street location, and then Pearl Street over in North Dyton, which, the Pearl Street one includes intersection improvements. So, Tom is looking forward to a little assistance, and we put our heads together, and we've designed a scope of services for design and engineering services, to solicit written quotations for design firms to take on those three projects, so we can get them rolling. And this is part of your Complete Streets application, which had been approved at the state level, it's a fantastic program, and I'm thrilled to see Dyton taking advantage of it, so well done to Tom, well done to everybody working on it, so that's in the works. And as part of our field trip, he took me down over to Bridge Street, beautiful, I loved it down there, but the bridge, which is actually, I think, a culvert, to be honest, is in need of some repair, and it has been out for many, many years, and people might ask why we are moving on it right now, and it's, there was an accident there, so it's kind of been bumped to the top of the list, and we talked about it, I reached out to Serpide, who I was actually speaking with on agricultural commissions and stuff, and asked him if there was anything that Serpide could figure out for us, and he said, actually, there's a culvert grant repair reconstruction program that they're looking into for us.
Is that the same, I don't mean to interrupt, I apologize, Selectman Goulart, is that the same thing as the small bridge program, or is that something?
It's different.
No, unfortunately, it's, it doesn't meet the small bridge program requirement, unless, unless the part closest to the mill is not considered part of the bridge, if that's the case, then there could be some, there could be some funding.
Okay. It sounds like there's funding with culvert.
Yeah.
It's a culvert, but again, that's a, I like safety nets, so, that's Plan B.
Sure.
And then, also, just what happened this week, for, we sent out, or, so I can move to Graff, who helped me send out my first monthly newsletter, I hope to do these monthly to communicate to department heads, the public, what's going on in town hall, so this one I just introduced myself, and welcome to anybody to come in, I like having an open-door policy, I won't be able to be there all the time, but it's my goal to keep my door open and welcome residents to literally stop in and say hello, and if they have a question, I'd be happy to make time for them. So, we sent that out, and if you'd like to be on the email list, just let us know, and we'll add you, but it was also posted on Facebook, but I know a lot of folks might not be on Facebook, so that's there, and something, some communication.
It was very well received, by the way, with all the comments I got.
Do you know what else?
Good, good.
Not to piggyback off that, but you know what else I'm thinking, since cable is gonna be redoing their whole system, when they get the new equipment, we could actually, if it's one page, and I'm not gonna limit you, but if it's one page, we could actually have it as, like, a thing where it stops, instead of scrolling by, and give people time who will have Channel 9 and maybe not Internet, to get access to that newsletter.
I'll have to increase my font, right? Yes, but sure, and, you know, sometimes there will be a quick little blurbie about it, a blurb about it, but I, I like the idea, I like the ability to communicate directly to residents, just right in their inbox, so they're busy, everybody's busy, and we can let them know, short little snippet. The other thing is the pilot agreement for Williams Street, so just an FYI, and this will be on a future meeting with Town Council, but I wanted to let the board know that we've received correspondence regarding the pilot agreement from 2015, and we are going to take action, so that's just a to-be-continued, I guess, update, and that's all I have.
This is 2023, correct?
2023, Williams Street, yes.
Williams Street.
Yes.
Edit.
That's it for me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, ratify the Town Administrator contract, I know we've been through several iterations.
Yeah, and I got a last one.
I know you do. So, why don't, why don't we do this, I tried to get what I thought we were talking about, why don't you go over what the last iteration is, and maybe we can approve it, and then...
The only, the only thing that I had was number five, hours of work, what I'm proposing is, it will read, "The basic work week shall be 40 hours scheduled on Monday through Thursday, inclusive therein shall be meetings of other boards or committees of the town, as the board may direct, or which are relevant to the performance of the duties of the position of Town Administrator. The Town Administrator shall have a flexible work schedule to accommodate her attendance at meetings. Attendance at town meetings is expected and is outside of the flexible work schedule and is not additionally compensated." So, I would, on the second page, I would strike, third line, it'll read, "Administrator shall have a flexible work schedule to accommodate her attendance at meetings," period, and then strike the rest, and then, "Attendance at town meetings is expected," and strike the rest of that, and it will read, "Is expected and is outside of the flexible work schedule and is not additionally compensated." That's the only thing I came up with.
No, I think that's good work, my one question would be, and good work on that, my one question would be, I'm not sure if you had seen this, are, is, you were into this thing?
Totally okay, absolutely, totally okay.
Perfect.
So, I think what we, we can do is, we can ratify this.
As amended here?
As amended here, and then Karen can just type up a...
And then we have that other one, the goal thing that was changed.
Where's that?
I'm sorry, I changed it to...
It's under 15, it's under item 15.
We only have the first and second.
Yeah, we changed, we had talked about that last time.
We agreed to that last week, yeah.
Okay, so with that, with this latest amendment that Nancy's proposed, let's...
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board ratify the contract, the employment contract with Mallory Aaronstein, Town Administrator, with the amendment that I read a few minutes ago.
Second.
Okay, on favor say aye.
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 Hold it.
You'll get paid next week, good news.
And then we'll make sure that the signed copy is filed with the Town Council and Treasury.
Right.
And just to finish up this item, so, part of the contract, as everyone just heard, is to establish goals, and I just jotted down three, and we'll pick two, and so one is to update the harassment policy in town, so when I was going through my paperwork to come on board here, I noticed that it's still specific to sexual harassment, and now there's tons of harassment litigation case law and all of that, so I'd like to just update that to encompass everything, that's an idea, the other is to attend one procurement class, at least, but I can get that done in FY18, I think, and the third, and one that I find most important, is to streamline the process for our meetings, including posting agendas, scheduling the meetings, completing tasks delegated by the board, I'd like to put in a process by which Karen and I work together, figure out everything that's come out of the meeting, delegated by you, and assign it amongst the two of us, and that way, we can keep everything rolling, keep tabs on where things are, and move efficiently.
I think that's great.
And then also, part of that is to develop rules and regulations for the Board of Selectmen, which defines roles, essentially, and kind of cleans things up. So, those are my three ideas, of course, I'm open to anything that you might have, but these were, number one, attainable, which is important, just for the public's knowledge, per my contract, these would have to be completed by July 1, and satisfactory as well, so...
Is there any way, I'm not sure if the board is ready to discuss that tonight, I have two things.
This is me just presenting it.
Of cour-, oh, absolutely, no, I, personally, I like all three, is, does the board prefer that we get, like, something in writing on this, rather than just, like, a verbal, you know what I mean, so it's documented?
Yeah, I think, I think, once we, I mean, once we get, determine what two of those goals, then you would present us with a more detailed...
Correct, absolutely, and I'm envisioning it would be attached as an amendment to my contract, since they are...
Oh, okay, part of it, my other question is, and I know, you know, you just got here, so I don't want to put too much on you, but I just want to ask, you know, kind of feel you out on this, regarding procurement, I remember, it is in your job description, which we'll get to, and it was in the original job description before we went out and hired a Town Administrator, so my question is, do you have a goal for when you'd like to obtain that certification?
ASAP, as long as I can, so each class is three days out of the office, which is, it's a lot, we have a four-day work week, but it's out over in Boston, and I would be there all day, each day, I've taken one class, they would probably require that I take it again, this is the Inspector General's office, would probably require that I take it again, they're $450 each, so my budget this year can absolutely handle that, but it's, I'm at the mercy of their scheduling, so...
How many more classes do you have?
So, I've taken one, it's three total, but they probably would want me to take the other, I'd have to check, but I took the basis one, the Chapter 30B, and I have a working knowledge of that, so I'm very confident I can zip through that.
Do you think it's reasonable to get that done by the end of this fiscal year?
At least one class, yes, the certification, no, because I am at the mercy of their scheduling, and I have to get it.
And you probably want to get up and running, do you know what I mean?
Yes.
Like, get a grasp and a handle, which, which it sounds like you've obviously done, you've been meeting people crazy.
Yeah.
But, you know, I wouldn't want to throw that on you, I would, I don't know how my colleagues feel, I would want you to make that decision, because you know what the workload is, and you will know best if you can juggle that with traveling to Boston, which Selectman Goulart and I have both traveled to Boston and worked in Boston, so it's a, it's tough.
Right, I think that I can handle it, it is just three days, I can accommodate my schedule, meeting-wise, to, you know, handle the workload, and, you know, we figured it out, it's important to me that I be certified and take on that role, I'd like to...
Certification's a separate, I'll call it a test.
Correct, yeah.
Like another day, I mean, and I know there's a lot of studying that goes with it.
Right, absolutely, there is, so there's the three courses that you have to take, like, you, there's no way around this, they make you enroll, you go to the courses, you take the tests for each class and pass on, then you're certified, I believe in a comprehensive exam, and then, every three years, I believe, might be five, but I think every three years, you're recertified, so you have to kind of keep up with it, but that's smart governing, I think, because it ensures that the people making these decisions actually are qualified.
And are on top of it, yeah, absolutely.
So, so that goal, was that at least one class?
To attend one, and that's just so I can guarantee that I can get in the class and be accepted by the ID's office.
So, you could get two of...
Right, if their scheduling allows, usually they have April and June, but June is not a great time to be out of the office, it will follow along, town meeting and all of that, so...
What was the first one, your first goal?
I said, "Update the harassment policy," it's just something I noticed when I was filling out my employment paperwork here, that it was specific to sexual harassment, and nowadays, there's all sorts of types of harassment.
Well, there always was, but, I mean, you know, right?
You know what, you're absolutely right, but the policy should...
So, you guys, are you comfortable discussing now, or you want to?
I'd like to have, I'd like to have Mallory put this in writing, give us a little bit more description of what you envision.
They would entail, absolutely.
For the three, and then we'll just have the two, I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
We can do that next week.
It could just be very, like, it doesn't need to be, like, and I'm gonna attend this, nothing just like general, why, and how, you know, I guess you would think about going around.
My action plan, for sure.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you. So, new business, discussion of the FY19 budget process.
Thank you. May I ask one question before we begin in this discussion?
Sure.
Who put together this awesome document?
I did.
Because I've never seen this before, so I know...
No, she just...
Well, I did it today. Thanks, so this is, I'll explain this, if I may, Mr. Chairman, this is essentially how we did it in West Bridgewater, I was not able to meet with the Town Accountant before doing this, I wanted to just check with her and the Finance Chairman, Committee Chairman, just to see how the process went on her end, but this is something that we, this is how we did it, and this June 4th, 2018 meeting for, I just made that up, I don't know if that's where, when we're gonna have it, but I based my timeline backwards, based on the requirements we need for town meeting, posting requirements, and feasibly, how we can meet with everybody, so this is definitely up for interpretation, and it's your budget, your town, and this was just how we did it, and I, you know, I welcome feedback, changes, anything that you'd like to add.
Can I ask you one question, I see here, December 20th or 27th, BOs meeting, board determines, and this is a public record, just anybody can look at this, board determines if they want to request level funded slash level service budgets, or ask for budgets with requested increases, I think that's a great idea, I think, you know, I don't know how Chairman Taylor and Selectman Goulart feel about it, I think it's a little too late for this budget coming up, but for the next budget, before we have that meeting, we, I would like to meet with the department head, I don't know how it would work, or you can meet with them, or we can all meet with them together, and kind of discuss, like, where we think the department's going, what the expectations and needs of the department are from the department head, because what I, what I think can waste time in the budget process is, the department has, has a certain expectation, we have a certain expectation, but because we haven't discussed it, they'll send in the request, and then it's, it's not palatable for us, I'm just giving an example of what can happen, so it's a waste of time, if we have a conversation before the budget process, and we're all on the same page going into it, I think it's easier for the department head, and it's easier for us, and it's easier for the Finance Committee, who can, you know, have a finalized, somewhat finalized warrant to make decisions on, and everybody's on the same page with surprises.
And justifications, justifications for requested increases.
Absolutely, but having that conversation together with the department, so that there are, we're working together, no hard feelings, expectations are very clear on what we expect, what they expect, and so it just, it makes more sense for, in terms of the whole process, and the smoothness and efficiency.
I think, I think we have time in this budget cycle to do that, because I think, built in here, January 2nd, which is pretty soon, Budget Message Department has to turn in their budgets, so, I mean, we can play it by ear, but I, I think, and...
I don't, I just don't want to pressure anybody, you know what I mean?
And what I, what I failed to put in here, and I'm sorry, is that usually, in West Bridgewater at least, we gave them at least a month to compile their budgets, so at that time, they can come in and say, hey, I have an extra 5% of my budget because of X, Y, Z, I do like the opportu-, as a department head, I believe they should be afforded the ability to present to you their appointing authority, what they're doing, and I think that is just a good organizational...
And that's their fiduciary duty as the department head, you know, I certainly don't want to undercut their responsibility, which is to make sure they have the assets they need to run the department.
Exactly.
You know, that's the first thing.
See, the first, first thing on there, see, I think, I like the concept of a level budget with, with requests, what I don't like is put them all in the budget, because then you kind of lose them, so if you do a level budget, I mean, that's my thought, you do a level...
What we've done in the past, it's gonna be easier this year, simply because the contracts are settled.
Right, yes.
So, when you talk level funded budget, you don't have to build in increases, because when you do the budget for salaries, all of your fixed items, they're gonna be fixed, they really aren't negotiable, because all the contracts state what you have to have, so the things that are in there that you might have an opportunity to look at would be supply lines.
Right.
If you need equipment, that's a separate request, so...
Or personnel.
Yeah, so within the personnel lines, that's pretty, that's gonna be pretty cut and dry.
Okay.
Supply lines, that's, that's, that'll have some big, over and above regular supplies and things, you need equipment, I don't mean big equipment, but you need equipment or whatever, because the big equipment things come before the Capitol Committee.
Right, yep.
So, I like last year when the budget was formulated, we had to go to town meeting to get the funding to cover the raises, because those contracts weren't settled, we only had enough money in the Highway Department budget for that, so, so that's gonna make it a little easier this year, too.
Yes.
Because they're gonna verify the dollars with Gen.
Right.
To make sure that their budgets, they've budgeted enough money, you know, to cover. The other thing that's gonna be good this year is that we don't have a lot of vacancies, so we've hired additional staff, so the amount of money needed for overtime and that to cover holes that we had, that should be down somewhat also.
Sure, sure.
The other thing we want to do this time around, too, I think, we talked about it, all staff positions that need to be increased or whatever, need to be done in the annual budget, we're not gonna entertain all, like, the last, we had 50-something articles at the special, I think that's ridiculous.
Yeah, and that was because we had to go, some of them, you had to go get the money to fund the contracts, whereas all, all, all personnel should be resolved, we'll only have one contract opening up, and that will be the police, but all the others, the money should be available by, and voted at the annual town meeting.
So, we'll put that, when we, when we put the, when you put it out, we just, we'll make clear that that's how we want to do it.
So, what I want to do right now, it opens...
And equipment, I think equipment, too, is, you know, but...
Since we have a department head present, I don't mean to put you on the spot, how do you feel about what's being discussed?
So, the only question that I would, or topic that I would want to discuss is the deadlines, because we all have been customarily writing budgets based on how we've been doing it, and I'm, I'm okay with change, I think it's great, especially if it's gonna streamline things.
Correct.
So, the only thing I would ask, that if there was gonna be a race to implement this for this, for FY19, that there might be some leniency in the dates, and if not, all of us are prepared for that.
When do you normally submit your budget?
It's usually big January, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, so this would give you extra two weeks, potentially.
It's kind of the same timeline. Okay, I wasn't following all the...
Well, and you don't have this either, yeah, this...
I have the 20th of January, and I don't...
See, the way I look at, I mean, the preliminary work begins in January, but in fact, you can't make fi-, we can't make final decisions till we're much further down the road, but at least I think the departments need to think about what kinds of changes they want in their, in their area.
To be honest, I have a, I have a vision, but I haven't done anything until I come back for the New Year.
Of course.
And that's why, so it says here, and I, and I'm, right, and you don't have the ability to see this, and I'm sorry, but this, the December 20th, 27th is for the Board of Selectmen, you know, actions.
To, like, start that, you know, process.
Exactly, and then, I think, a month's notice is appropriate, and if somebody needs longer, hey, I'm waiting for this, just, you know, just communication, and I'm good with that.
I think that's fair, just, you know, speaking personally for my department, I just stopped to get some let-up in my workload now, which is why I go on vacation for the holiday, so, you know, I really am not focused on budgeting till I come back for the New Year, so if you're telling me there's a window, then that should be fine.
We're talking about February, March, and April, so we've got plenty of time to do this.
Would you want to run the budget by the end of January?
Not necessarily.
No, it doesn't even say that.
No, no.
It says meetings in February, well, he can't see this, so let me...
But she's gonna send out the...
Yeah, there you go.
He's gonna send out the bus, the budget message in January, and then...
Correct, the third line says, "February, March, and April is when the board will review it," so you would have had time from whenever you get back from vacation to, to, you know, these general dates to get that done, now my question for the board, and, you know, Now, my question for the board, and, you know, we don't have to come to a consensus or make any decisions tonight, but my vision for the budget, and I'm not, I'm just going to talk about how it had been. And Selectman Gulart, you know the best because you were on the finance committee and then on the Board of Selectmen. I would feel more comfortable as a selectman having us with the town administrator do the budget, and then whatever we decide as the board collectively with the expertise of the town administrator after consulting with all the department heads. That gets sent to the finance committee, and they make recommendations on what they're presenting with.
I absolutely agree, because I, I mean, I think I've said this many times, I believe. But this, I think the budget is a selectman's budget.
That's our main job.
So, and not, not to, you know, take anything away from the finance committee, but then they need, because we need to, we need to develop something we're comfortable with. And then it goes to the finance committee. We'll have discussions with them about what they recommend or what they think should be modified.
But it's their job, if they don't agree with the Board of Selectmen, they have every right to recommend or not recommend.
Absolutely.
That's their, that's their choice to make.
Well, that's a requirement.
But I think the budget is our choice to make, working with the town administrator and directly working with the department heads.
I agree.
I agree.
What's your thoughts on it?
And I like your comment regarding the one on the one with the department head to make sure that your vision and the department head's vision are aligned.
Absolutely.
Way before the process gets started.
Because there's nothing worse, I would think, as a department head, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Commissioner, to do all this work, spend a month on a budget, think that you're, you know, doing something that's going to be palatable for the board and then the finance committee, and then you find out, surprise, no, you have more work to do. I don't think that's efficient at all for anybody.
Absolutely. So I would, I would welcome that change as well. Before I address that, what we've talked, I just got to say something before I forget it. When you put your budget together this year, FY '19, the thing you've got to think about is the Old Town Hall. Because you're the most likely person to think about the operation of that. Whereas, I mean, this building has history. We know the electricity, the this or the gas, the heat, all that. But hopefully with, when that opens, you'll have a few months of winter and, you know, some warm weather, so that you're going to have to put that budget together for that building.
I know my budget's going to have some changes in it this year, so I have prepared for that.
Well, not only your personal department budget, but the Old Town Hall budget.
Is carried in the Board of Selectmen.
Right, right. So because other than the, well, only comes, we have that deal with building maintenance and all that good stuff, utilities.
Right.
Because there's no history that we can use. But getting back to the process, my understanding is from, the only new element we have this year is Mallory's here, we have a town administrator. I believe the budget workshops have been formulated by the town accountant, and they go out. So here's where you were last year, and here's where you are, and fill in the blanks. And I know she'll verify salaries so that everyone's sure that they accounted for everyone and what they're supposed to get with all their contractual stuff. So I think that's going to work out okay. Because department heads are used to working with the budget worksheet. So that's not a new process. They're going to get historical data, where they are, and fill in the blank, okay? And new requests, both on the Board of Selectmen and the finance committee. Anything that's new and, and I'll call it extraordinary. I'm not talking at capital level, but I'm talking something. If you had three computers that had to be replaced in your office, that's not a capital expense, but it's over, you didn't have that last year. So that will be a separate request. I knew three computers with this software, whatever. Or like the project that you did that was a special article with your records and all that, that kind of stuff. Those are separate. So we will have, if you will, the, the basic budget request with, with the standard things, salaries, supplies, that kind of stuff, contractual obligations. Then there will be the, the extraordinary supplies or equipment over and above, but it hasn't reached the warrant article level. It's part of the budget. Then we have the warrant article, which is separate for, so, so I think.
Yeah, as a department head, I think what I'm hearing is that we're not going to be in the entire process, which is great. But we are going to streamline.
Yes.
And I, I'll embrace that. And the dialogue that will be opened up prior to sitting down with finance committee, I think is more than warranted. And I think that's good for the actual town meeting, by the way. Having everybody on the same page, everybody knows what's going on.
The only thing I, I think, I think you'll first interact with the department is, before we do.
So that's my big question. So I wrote in here, so you see, meetings in February, March, and April. There's lots going on here. So the board, this board is reviewing all the budgets. And I wrote in here, here's presentations by committee chairman and department heads. I don't know if you want to do that. And then there's, we had a capital budget committee that was made up of members of the finance committee.
We have capital outline.
Right. So the capital outline committee is a bylaw, and by bylaw, the town accountant's a member. My position didn't exist, so I'm not a, a member.
Okay, our count's not on the capital outline committee.
Oh, it says that she's a non-voting member in the bylaw.
Well, she's an advisor, they say.
Right, right. So where it specifically says that she's a part of it, I just, I want to make sure I can be in on the conversation. Not like, I don't need to participate, I just want to be there.
Praying to it.
So I know what's going on. But anyway, that happens at the same time. So this is all, that is what needs to be worked out. Do you want the department heads to come in here at your meetings, present them to you? Do you want them to be with me, and I'll regurgitate?
I would prefer that, and then you can report to us. And anybody can object to this. But just for time's sake, I think it's better and more streamlined. And, you know, you as a department head certainly, I'm sure, will have an opinion, and, and you're entitled to. I just think that it's better to have her do it. And then, based on that conversation or the individual conversations you have as you go to each department head, incorporate what that information reveals into the discussion about the budget when we go to review it. I think makes the most sense.
I think you need, you should do all the, like, the.
The legwork.
All the legwork, and so that, no, seriously, because, because, because we don't want to, we don't want to have come in here with a department head and try and explain everything to us.
Right. Well, it does make for one.
Completely agree. Quite frankly, that's.
I'm glad you're here. You're like the representative department head.
The department head master tonight.
So, that's the reason you're here, and I, and I completely agree. So, because if, if we at least have discussed it firsthand, then when it comes to full board, they can, we can have the background as to why we went this way.
Yeah, right, we have questions. We'll also get a chance to look at it before you show up.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
The other thing, there was an attempted budget reform, I'll call it. Sounds like something that they're doing in Washington.
Let's not go there.
Hopefully it'll actually pass. No, we got a better process, my friend. And when we go to town meeting, we get budgets passed. In that reform, it was, my opinion, I was on the finance committee at the time. The problem was department heads would be dragged out to go to this meeting, and this meeting, and this meeting. And then you got to meet with the finance committee, it was like.
Right.
No, the finance, if all of the work is done internally in this building like we're talking about, and it's all gathered here, and the budget is formulated, and the Board of Selectmen gets the questions answered, the finance committee will set up their meetings, and they will want department heads there, okay? But by the time that information is out there, they don't, the finance committee does not have big, long lists, okay? They have, they have assurance, the salaries are correct because all the contracts are settled at this point. We've covered all of the uniform allowances and all those kinds of things. That's most of your budget. And then the special request articles, they will want to talk about those. And if there are any capital ones, those they do at the very end before they go through and finalize everything. So I think it's good that we are not going to have department heads going to meeting after meeting after meeting, and then you got to go talk.
You're going to try people down, too, as you know.
Yeah. It's difficult.
And, but by the time it gets to the finance committee, you and the department head will already met with us. So we're going to all be on the same page.
Correct.
Yep. It filters out, you know, if there's like 50 level service budgets or level funded budgets, they don't need to parade through here and say, I have to do something else this year. Great, move along.
Because basically what we want to know is, what are the increases?
Well, the other thing is that I noticed was that it was difficult for the members of committees and boards to like meet with the finance committee, because you know, the finance committee doesn't work here full time. I mean, they all have jobs, and they're all very busy. So you have to work around people's schedules. And, you know, no offense to you, but you are the central person here who's going to be, who's going to be the hub.
No offense at all.
Coordinating everything. And since you're going to be here, they will be able to find time to meet with you on their schedule. You know, as long as you have, you know, free time.
I also think if we do this, this way, we'll have a budget that'll be presented to the finance committee a little earlier than it was this last time around. So that they'll be able to look at it, and then call in who they want to talk to.
Exactly. If they have major questions, maybe they'll have questions about the Grange. I think that's valid for them to explore.
The good thing about the finance committee's schedule, because I used to, when I did that, I used to set them all up. If, if the meetings are going to happen in March, for the most part, they're all done in sequential weeks. So it can, so one particular night may have like three departments, four departments, whatever, all like within a certain time period.
Sure.
It goes out, and then if somebody says, I can't make this one, but can you switch me? And then I would go back and make the arrangements.
That's exactly.
And just, you know, so the good thing about the finance committee's meetings, they're not all spread out here, there, and everywhere, they pretty much.
They're systematic.
Right in place, yeah.
And do they out of practice meet with all of the department heads?
They try to have.
They really do.
Yeah, they try.
Yeah.
But again, I think if you get the preliminary work done, it's going to be less of that necessary, because.
I still think they'll want to meet with us, but I think the process will be streamlined significantly because most discussion with the finance committee was when we made changes to our budget. So if that's all been discussed prior to, and the Board of Selectmen is on board, then it should be rudimentary.
Do they question increases? Or they may question level funded, because they say, you know, you've got this happening, you haven't.
Sure.
But they also look and say, last year you budgeted this, this year you're much lower, so that there was extra money, money left. They'll be looking at and saying, you know, or if, or if this is last year's budget, and you're asking up here for this, it's going to be, wait a minute, you didn't spend what you had last year. What are you looking for up here?
See, I think most of those will be covered by Mallory before it even gets to that point.
I fully expect you to attend these meetings.
Yep.
So I'll be there to summarize maybe.
And I'm glad you brought that up. That's the part that I like, is that if someone from a board or commission cannot make it, you've already met with them, you've already, you're well aware of the expectations, why things are there. So you can sort of be that ambassador in their absence if that happens.
So maybe you could make that one correction, just to say the, the TA will.
Is this under meetings in February and March?
There, there's no correction. The board is going to review all budgets, but the step before that is that she's met with the department head. So we're reviewing what she's already discussed with them.
I want to make sure that, that doesn't say that here.
That second clause there, the here's presentations, you want that to be me, and that will be up.
Right.
Like, so that's, budgets are due February 2nd.
So there's like the third step in between.
Yes.
So maybe you could update that and bring it back next week. Because I think we need to get this out to department heads. I think the other thing that, that's always important with budgeting processes is that we force department heads to stick to the timeline.
Well, can, can we pass this as a policy?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. But let it come back next week.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, with the, you know, with the modifications.
Then I think we should make this the policy for this year's budget, get it out to department heads.
Well, why can't we, why can't it just be a general policy going forward?
Well, because the dates might change.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but she can put like late December Board of Selectmen meeting.
I think you want to go right here.
I think Mallory's going to have to talk to Jen also, because she's going to have to get the worksheets out. So they got to have a timetable at work.
And I need to, I need to meet the assessors for growth figures, Mary for receipts and all of that. So we'll have a little finance meeting.
So can you meet, can you meet with them and then, you know, revise it, and then we'll act on, you know, a more finalized, comprehensive policy?
I would like us to be able to agree or talk about what kind of budgets are we asking our department heads to provide. I mean, I could, I just, in the future.
Don't say zero base.
No.
Yes, no. No. I can give an idea after my meeting with these ladies. We can talk about what our budget would look like. I'm, just so the public knows, I'm fiscally conservative. I don't like to go out there and spend. So we will approach that, that way, and then.
I think, I think where we talked before, I think it should be level, level budgets with additional requests.
With additional requests, that's what I'm.
So they're not, they're not buried in the budget yet. So we can see what they, you know.
I can comment historically, I've been here for six years, been part of the budget process since the day I walked in. The town in general is fiscally conservative. We, we, we handle our money very well, so. Dave, was that you, your first day?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we, we all sit with this thing.
So I'm going to revise this and bring it to you next week.
Next week.
We have an unwritten policy, but it's cast in stone. Don't even think about a two and a half override.
Right.
It's never, there has never been one proposed in this town, even when things were very, very tight.
Good.
Don't even think about it.
I'm with you. As a taxpayer, I understand, while I'm not a taxpayer here.
No two and a half overrides.
A general tax.
A counter.
I have seen a tight year since I've been here, so it can't happen.
So let's move on to the next item, which is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sure, sure. I don't want to, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to link in the meeting tonight anymore, but I have a couple of quick comments before I get to my bid. Hello, everybody at home. Don't often get to see you as much as I'd like to lately. It's been, still been incredibly busy in town, as you can see. But I have a couple of quick PR announcements. The winter's here, and I know I tend to let you know about a few things before the onset of winter. But especially two areas. One, I want to make sure that we all have working smoke and carbon dioxide detectors. We had a rash of chimney fires over the last two years. And I have to tell you, there's nothing worse than breeding a family in their home when they have a chimney fire. The look in their eyes is just something we don't want to experience. Fortunately, we haven't had any large property losses or loss of life. But we want to make sure that we, we have working smokes and carbons. The other thing is snowfall. We had our first snowfall this week, last week. And last year, I had told everybody at home that when you go out and shovel the walkway in your driveway, make sure you remember that second entrance, front entrance or the side entrance that we never use. Because in the event of a fire or an emergency, you may need that. And the emergency personnel responder, responding rather, may need to get in to get you. It's especially important with all the solar panels that have been installed on roofs because six inches of snow can easily turn into well over a foot when the snow slides off your panels and can block the door. So just be mindful of that. Remember the second entrance. Okay, thanks. With respect.
This is, okay, go ahead, then.
Yeah, with respect to the bid, we already did the bid opening. I just asked the board if you would refrain from granting it until I checked with the timeline from the low bidder. He's willing to meet me tomorrow, provided we move forward with granting the bid request for the glazing, which is the vestibule and doors for the Old Town Hall project. And that would be Guido's Plate Glass and Services, so.
We got, we got, by the, just so everybody knows, we got three bids on this. Somerset Glass, $19,246. Guido's Plate Glass Service Incorporated, $17,790. And Harold Glass, $17,800. So you're recommending Guido.
I am. And just so everybody at home knows what this is, we have two exterior doors that are going to be full insulated glass storefront doors like we have here on the town hall. that are gonna be full insulated glass storefront doors like we have here on the Town Hall. We have an interior vestibule, which is gonna create an airlock, so when you walk into the lower level of the Old Town Hall, we don't let all of the weather, whether it's hot or cold, into the building. And lastly, there's a conference room that I'm constructing, which has really showcased some of the underlying elements of the building. I've, we've saved some of the old beam structure, we've showcased it, I have an old foundation that we are making presentable, and I'm going to glass in that conference area so we can showcase those elements. So that in total comes to the price that you see before you.
So are you choosing, so there's a hundred dollar difference between Harold Glass and Guido's, are you choosing, is your recommendation, excuse me, Guido's because of the timeline? Oh, no, it is the lowest, I'm sorry.
And it's a ten dollar difference.
So the timeline was coincidental?
Yeah, I called Guido's and said he was a low bidder, I asked him what his response time would be, because that would be a deciding factor, especially over ten dollars. He's gonna meet me tomorrow, provided you move forward, okay?
Okay.
So you're making a motion?
Did, just one question, do we have like a timeframe for when this is gonna be done, just the whole building? Because I know it's difficult for you right now, because you don't, like you and the veterans agent don't have an office right now, so I know it's...
Actually, I like my temporary space, so I am fine. The lower level of Town Hall will have a move-in date of January. It probably will be towards the latter part of January, but we're targeting a January move-in. The upstairs, I want done for the next town meeting. So dependent on what's on the town meeting is whether or not we'll be able to use that space, that has an occupancy limit of ninety, so if you put a yard sale or a dog leash on there, we might not fit. But that's, that's the intent.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you.
Do you wanna make a motion to somebody about that?
Mr. Com, oh, Mr. Com, excuse me. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award the bid for the glass doors and vestibule to Guido's Plate Glass Service Incorporated in New Bedford, Massachusetts, for a total amount of seventeen thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars.
Second.
Okay, on favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
So I guess we'll have to sign, there's no acceptance on his.
I have, I have one.
Okay, we should probably, we should sign it. Well, somebody should sign it. Because it has to be one of us, probably me. Okay, we should probably take another vote to give immediate authority to sign that.
When you award the bid, that automatically covers the deciding of the contract. If it's only one signature, he can just give you the file.
Okay, okay, that's fine, okay, as long as you're all broken.
I have, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Meeting agenda policy. So, build background and we can start. So what?
I hate it.
I love it.
You don't fix something that's not broken, Mr. Chairman.
Let's get to the discussion. So what happened was, we wanna, we wanna have a, in order to be able to get the mission, the meetings posted properly, particularly this meeting, and to get agenda items out on the, on the agenda that we're actually gonna discuss, so that we meet the requirements of the open meeting law, and we also, residents that wanna see what the agenda is will know what it is before we meet, so if you wanna come down and get involved in the discussion, you have that opportunity. So Brett wrote the policy, and, and I, I also wrote a policy, and I think we just, there's two things we wanna discuss tonight, and that is the policy and also the format of the policy. And let me just say what, why I did this one.
Yeah, of course.
This is a, this is a format that I've used for many, many years, and it...
It looks dated.
It's not dated, Jesus.
Well, as you wanna go, guys, this is not red ink, but I would suggest you take a look at this, because neither one of these are acceptable to me, so I just read it back.
Let me just, let me just go through this, and then you can, you can criticize me as much as you want. I just feel like it needs to be very concise, and it needs to deal directly with what it is we're, we're trying to accomplish. So, so I just have the policy description, then I have some background about why we're doing this, and the only, the only difference I think between what you wrote and what I wrote, I don't believe it's about making it easy for us, it's really about the requirements of open meeting law and getting it out so the public will know what we're talking about.
We're trying to agree, I agree with that a hundred percent.
Okay, okay. And then the purpose I put was why we're writing this policy, and then the policy itself, so it, you know, and in the policy I bulleted, you know, one, two, three, four, five, so that we can, you know, go through them and make sure that we all agree with that, and it's real clear what the, what the policy is.
I actually don't have any content revisions or suggestions. My thing is just, I just don't like the, the way that you drew it up, which I think is minor, so what I'd like to do is just hear from Selectman Goulart regarding the actual content.
You've got the red one over there.
I do, the original.
Can I just say, are, are we all looking at the same one?
I have a copy of Chairman Taylor's and mine.
I took, I got the one from Brett, and I just macked it up, and mine's one...
This is with Nancy.
Selectman Goulart's edit.
The red ink, that's mine.
Okay, all right, so I just wanna make sure, I, I wanna make sure I'm looking at the same.
What are you, what's your concern about either one?
Well, I'm thinking back to the, the, the last one we did was the Boy Scout thing, Eagle Scout, that procedure policy thing. It was really a procedure thing. We don't need a policy, the open meeting law covers all of the stuff about posting. We need a procedure, okay? Not a policy, a procedure. And if you think about the Eagle Scout thing, what that thing just tells any potential Eagle Scout, number one, if it's on town property, this, these are the steps you must follow, and of course it all flows to Tom Ferry. If you're a scout without a project, you get in touch with Mr. Ferry, because he knows, he's got a list. Once you go through that process, then it follows how you do it with, with a particular department head. We kinda did some quick adapting in the case of the library painting, painting job, because when the trustees approved that Eagle Scout project, they weren't aware that we had already just developed this whole procedure thing. But, so that gentleman, that young Eagle Scout came in and gave us his initial and his, his middle, his midterm progress report, so that was fine, we got through that. We even address in that, if you are not doing a scout project on public property, the Board would like to know, because we wanna recognize and commend everyone who has a scout project, public or private property, because they all do the same amount of work, planning, fundraising, that whole thing. So we don't need a policy, we need a procedure, and what, one of the recommendations I, I made was try to get this to fit on one page. And then at the very end, what you do is, you know, after you go through this, you read it three times, three separate meetings.
Yep.
So that there's public input and all that, and you don't need an enforcement clause, because it's a procedure, and you're basically saying, for example, the Eagle Scout, this is how it's gonna be done, we read it three times, we got input from the various boards, Hox and Rec, and Mr. Ferry, and whoever else, and we got through that whole thing, and then we voted it, and, I mean, did I get, send out Karen, by the way, to all department heads, so everyone knows what, what happens with the Eagle project?
The Eagle Scout?
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, all I'm saying is...
Are we adopting the procedure, though? Because my, my concern is, not this Board, of course, my concern would be having just like a, a procedure that we follow that's not on paper, and then a new Board comes, and, and, you know, people are adding things to the agenda on a Wednesday at 5:30.
The procedure would be there.
So we adopt the procedure?
Just like we did the Eagle Scout, we draft, we take the information that's already been put together, we put it in procedural form with steps, okay? And quite frankly, any Board after us can look at the Eagle Scout thing and say, oh, we're gonna change that, because that's, we're gonna change this. So we're really trying to get something in place that works for all of us together as a team. Now, Karen and Mallory would be here, even when elections change and this whole Board could change, but they're gonna be here, and when the new Board, our Board, as new Board members come, they're gonna say, well, we do have Mr. Chairman, whoever the Chairman is, this is the, this is the procedure in place, and that Board will work through it, and they may make changes down the road.
See, I'm okay with calling it a policy or procedure, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna basically kinda be the same thing.
I think, I kinda disagree, I think it needs to be a policy, because what, what we're doing is, and this has, this has gone all over the place with, with organization, you get a broad thing, because the open meeting law, I know it, it tells us what we have to do, but this is our policy about how we're gonna deal with...
For how we conduct our Board.
Our Board, right, so I think it's more than a procedure.
Well, I, I'm, you know, I'm not interested in arguing over semantics, is it a procedure, is it a policy? I like what's here, so if we're gonna call it bananas, I'm okay with that, we can pass it.
Okay.
Actually, let me, do you agree that it should be, 'cause my thing is, I agree with Selectman Goulart, and I also agree with Chairman Taylor, as convoluted as that is.
But we don't agree, so how's that work?
My thing would be not having something written, and then a new Board comes in, and they're trying to put stuff on the agenda at 5:30 on Wednesday.
Right.
And nobody, there's just, there's no real accountability in that.
I'm okay with calling it a policy or procedure, I don't have an opinion on that.
Do you believe it should be written?
I do believe it should be written, because it protects the town from open meeting law violations, and it's a procedure that you are all agreeing by your vote.
To abide by.
To abide by, and this really helps myself and Karen, this way Karen's not making all sorts of changes right up, and really shouldn't be making changes right up. The public is supposed to know, this is what they're gonna talk about, and this is when they're gonna talk about it, and I'm gonna show up because, on this issue here, and I know it's gonna be at like 7:15.
Correct.
So the whole idea is to tell the public, this is what we're gonna talk about, please come if you have something to say, so, or you wanna just sit and listen. So my idea is to, I like the being, having it being read three times at a meeting. I would like to compile all of these, take everybody's separate comments, and go back, and then I will provide it to you as part of the package.
Plus, there's redundancy in these, and I said, if you could take that out of there and whatever.
But I would specifically like the one with Selectman Goulart's comments.
You want the original?
I would love the red comments. I would give it, I'll give it back.
I love the red ink original. I did a photocopy, I don't, I don't need it.
Thank you. And I will present this to you next time.
Let me just say this about the background. The only reason I put background in here, because you don't want, you don't want people to feel they have to go to the open meeting law, which is thick.
You did copy and paste, I like that.
So I put, I put the background here, just so the, whatever procedure policy, whatever you wanna call it, people know why we're doing it and what the reference is, so.
I do wanna set, I do wanna set the appropriate expectation, piggybacking off you, Selectman Goulart. People in town should be aware, though, that if a new Board of Selectmen comes along and they agree to modify it, it will be modified, so this is our...
But they gotta go through the process.
Absolutely. Whenever we, if it's new, or we're remending something that exists, we've always done three separate meetings, and it's voted.
That's our, that's our, is it a bi-...
Is strictly applied to the Board of Selectmen?
Yes. See, I wish you had actually read it.
I'm sorry, Jim, I didn't hear you.
I actually, this is the applicability part? I'll see the procedure or other boards now.
It's Board of Selectmen and it's regular meeting, like the weekly meeting.
No, but, no, but it hasn't to be executive, because the rules apply, any meeting we have, same rules apply.
Each, each Board or Committee, whether elected or appointed, can develop their own procedure for conducting the meeting, posting it, as long as everyone has to comply with the open meeting law, which they do, because they have to post through suit.
So I have, so I, what I had written, while meeting, while meetings of a, of all public bodies are governed by the open meeting law, this policy applies only to meetings of the Board of Selectmen and not to any other Board, Committee, or Commission.
Well, because you also only have the, I mean, you have the power to, but this is specific to our Wednesday meetings, and by Monday at 12:30, that's our procedure, our operation. And I would say that hopefully this process can help us cut down on special meetings, because you're already meeting every week, which to me is above and beyond, and well done you that you've...
We've gone, we've, there have been times when we've had four meetings, I mean, it's just insane.
And that's craziness, but if you're meeting, what could poss, unless emergency circumstances, which the open meeting law for, does allow for, but why can't it wait? Why can't it wait for the next week?
I agree with you a hundred percent.
So that's something that I was gonna throw into my goal, and then I'll talk about that.
When you talk about policies, you think about the town, whereas you talk about procedurals, you're zeroing in on a committee, or a Board, or a whatever.
Right.
So, so that's what I'm saying, each Board or Committee can develop their procedure, because the policy really is, all meetings must follow the open meeting law and comply with a black line.
So why don't we just let you go ahead and develop what you're gonna develop and bring back?
Your assignment should, you choose to accept it.
My mission? The, this can also be a rules and reg, under a rules and regulation of the Board of Selectmen that you eventually adopt as well, so we can, and that's your total, you know, who takes over, when the Chairman needs to step down, or, you know, spelling out all of that procedural stuff.
The reason, and just to, to answer you, Selectman Goulart, the reason I didn't really mind whether it was called a procedure or a policy is simply because we both know, we all know, we have to eventually work on a townwide policies and procedures, and I just wanna make sure, whatever we call it, whatever it ends up being in its final form, gets into that book. That's my main concern, and I really don't care what we call it.
And the objective is just to make it clear what we do, so.
The other point I'd like to make, and this is for the public, I, the, the reason, the other reason why I wrote this, not for selfish or self-serving purposes, but I do think that for future Boards of Selectmen, having that forty-eight hours set in stone helps the Board to review the material that's gonna be on that agenda, rather than putting something on the agenda at 6:30 PM, and let's be honest, I'm still driving home to the meeting, like I'm not reviewing that document if that happens, so I just think it's more fair.
I just thought of something else that I didn't write on there in red, and that is, we refer to Mondays, Monday holidays are, we get a lot of those, so that's gonna have to back up to another day, which would make it the Thursday. That's how we ended up with Thursdays, and then, for the most part, Mondays, Mondays will work, except when there is a Monday holiday.
So we just changed, say, forty-eight hours prior to...
Well, I'm gonna write a note in here that just, or a line, that says, in the event of a holiday, items and topics will be due the preceding Thursday.
Perfect. Boom, nailed that.
Boom?
Yep.
Okay, okay, let's move on. Town Administrator Job Description. Did we already do that? No, we didn't do that.
No, you've been talking a lot about me.
Yeah, I, I'd like, I'd like a little, personally, I'd like a little more time.
Yeah, I just got this, so I would love to read this, and if it's okay with the Board, is everybody, you know, I know we need to make a motion, can we table this, so like next week?
How about, let's take it under advisement. Instead of table, we'll take it under advisement, and it will be a future agenda item. I don't know about next week, maybe the twentieth of December?
That's next week.
Under advisement, and then we can, we can patch it out.
Twenty-seventh.
Is that too close, though, with holidays? Do you wanna wait till January and the new year?
Why don't we do this like combination, wanna, with your, your goals, and this would fit nicely together, so.
Do you wanna do this in...
Like the first meeting in January?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we take the Town Administrator Job Description under advisement, and consider it for the agenda for the first meeting in January. That way, if that's not gonna work, or something else, we can, we're not making a commitment in stone, but like if we start through it, something happens, we say, well, I got through pages, what, this, and this, and this.
And I just wanted to see how I came up with this, so this is a combination of what they, well, my previous Assistant Town Administrator Job Description, what was on the website here in Dayton, and these highlighted bits are just kind of calling your attention, because it would be a change to what you have.
That was my question, too.
Yeah, that's what that is.
Were you given anything in writing during the search process that you would put in there, too?
It was like, I think that's what was on the website, actually.
That is, you can change that, I apologize, I just put that there.
Oh, that's fine, I smooshed it, and then I'll update it when it's there. And anyone in the public, if you wanna know a little bit more about me and what Town Administrators do, there is a, a section on the website, Town Administrator, it has a, kind of a quick job description as well, and then an about me section, so you can read up on me if you care to.
And read the newsletter.
Yeah, and read the newsletter. Oh, I should post those up there, actually.
Where?
On the website, the newsletter.
I think I did.
Did you do it? Great idea, thank you.
Okay, next item is...
We got a motion on the floor.
You seconded that?
I seconded that, I seconded.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. What's the difference between tabling and taking it under advisement?
Well, if you're gonna take it under advisement, it sounds like you're gonna be looking at it and doing some more study. Tabling means...
We ain't, we're not talking about it.
Not touching it.
That's good, okay. So that's the difference.
For anyone wondering.
Selectman Goulart's our resident parliamentarian.
Yes, that's my...
I don't know about that. I, I try to learn from Mr. McKean, and we don't use Robert's rules.
We use...
That's another thing we need to talk about, but let's not do that tonight. Okay, we have an appointment of a new call firefighter?
Good job, Chief. Thank you. Dated December 7th, 2017, to the Board of Selectmen, dear Board, I'm writing this letter to inform you that on January 1st, 2018, I will be appointing one new member to the Call Fire ranks. The new member is Samantha Gagnon. Samantha comes from our junior firefighter program and already has a great deal of training and familiarity within our department and with our equipment. Any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to contact me. Respectfully, Chief Christopher J. McGee. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Samantha...
Excuse me, no, no, we don't appoint.
Oh.
The Chief appoints.
Do we take the recommendation?
We acknowledge the recommendation of the Chief.
Do we have to vote on that?
We can vote to acknowledge the recommendation, yes.
Mr. Chair, thank God you're here, Selectman Goulart. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to acknowledge the appointment of Samantha Gagnon as the new call firefighter at Dayton Fire Rescue.
Check.
Yeah, on favor, say aye.
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 And just for clarification, the reason why we don't appoint firefighters is because we have a strong chief law and the chief has that authority that we, that we don't.
I wasn't trying to undercut you, Chief.
Okay. Elected official, let's do an announcement. Elected officials with expiring terms.
You're not sick of reading it yet? You are. Okay. Elected officials with terms expiring. Board of Assessors, Mr. Joseph Silva Jr., his term's expiring in 2018 for a term of three years. Board of Selectmen, Nancy J. Goolard, term expires 2018 for a term of three years. DR School District Committee, Mr. Christopher Andrade, term expiring, the term is for three years. DR School District Committee, Mr. Glenn Jefferson, term for three years. Housing Authority, Mr. John C. Costa, term is five years, Housing Authority. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Timothy Rhines, term is three years. Planning Board, Robert J. Woods, term is five years. I know there's probably some people watching, Mr. Woods was appointed to fill a vacancy, so that's why he's going to be up for reelection. Public Library Trustees, Allison A. Symbolisti, term, three years. Sewer Commissioner, William J. Mendoza, three-year term. Town Moderator, Mr. William McKeon Jr., one-year term. Tree Warden, it's going to be controversial, Thomas Ferry, term, three years.
And just to, again, this is not to say those positions, that the incumbents won't rerun for those positions, but if anybody's interested in getting involved in town government, there's an opportunity there for you. Okay. The next one. The next thing is just a, an announcement. The Dayton Fire Department is going to do a one-hour presentation for older adults on, I guess we fall into that, don't we?
I don't.
For older adults on fire and fall prevention at the Council of Aging 300 Lincoln Ave on Thursday. That's tomorrow, December 14th at 10:30 AM. And they're just going to spend an hour just talking about how to prevent falls and prevent, prevent fires and make sure you got.
Brett, hang on.
I was just going to say, am I locked out of this?
The other announcements, you want to be there?
Trash bags, shops, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. Call 508-669-6431 for more information. There are vacancies on the Historical Commission Land Use Committee and Capital Outlet Committee. The Dayton Lions Food Bank Distribution will be held on December 16th in the lower level of Town Hall from 8:00 AM to 9:30 AM. The Dayton Lions Toy Distribution will be held on December 19th at the, and that's going to be at the middle school and you should contact either Lion or Denise Wilkins at the school because it's done by time. I think it's 5:30 and 6:30.
Yeah.
We can get, we'll get.
Yeah, okay. So it's 5:30 for parents and 6:30 for grandparents. Okay. Okay. Correspondence?
Nobody's corresponding with us?
Acknowledgements, we have acknowledgement of a donation to Primetime.
Selectmen's reports, Mr. Chairman.
Did I skip something?
Yep.
Selectmen's reports. Anybody getting any reports?
Attended a meeting with Tom Ferry today of the Southeast Region Recycling Commission. There were people there from all over the eastern part of the state. And the topic was, again, DEP is really pushing to have communities, especially those that have the carts that the automatic.
Oh, yeah.
Clean up their act, quite frankly, because the problems are still continuing with those plastic grocery bags that you get at the supermarket. People will put recyclables in them and then put that in the recycling bin. Well, when the machine dumps it, the plastic goes in with all the recyclables and when it goes to the single stream or the recycling place, those bags get caught in the mechanisms and they're a real problem. They're also looking at, other problem areas are, when you buy a case of water, it's not in a case anymore. It's all wrapped in plastic. That plastic's a nightmare.
Oh, yeah. It's like top plastic.
So basically, they want everyone to understand for recycling, it's paper, glass, cans, and plastic containers, but not plastic bags, wraps.
What about Dunkin' Donuts cup?
Ask him for a friend.
Well. Styrofoam falls in with one of those groups, okay?
Generally, it's on the, on the item that has a recycle number.
There were, in addition to people from DEP, there was a presenter from Abington. There were two gentlemen. One was from Casella and one was from Waste Management. And they talked about the importance of getting contamination out of recyclables. And the contamination is not what you expect with contamination. They're really focusing on plastic bags, baggies. Those disposable containers that, like baby's applesauce comes in that you can squeeze, that's trash. So if it's not the things I mentioned, everything else is trash. Even shredded paper, because it's a pain. They're saying unless you want to send it to a bulk place that can bale it, put it in the trash because it's a nightmare to try to deal with it. And then they talked about the market in China and China has raised the level of what they will accept. And so these two large facilities, and they're national, ended up with stockpiles of baled paper and no place to send it because of the Chinese market saying, if it's mixed papers and it's not at this level, we don't want it. Another problem is snow and rain because when paper gets wet and it goes to the recycling, it's another nightmare. So I hadn't been to one since last fall because unfortunately it falls on the same day as my MMA meeting, but MMA at the last minute said we're not meeting in December or January because we got the big event coming up at the end of January, the annual meeting and trade show. So, so I did go with Tom. And what surprised me was the last meeting I went to, they were talking about this. And Dartmouth and New Bedford also made a presentation because they share a landfill, one of the few that's still open. They actually share a landfill and they have the carts. And they, they actually have teams of inspectors that go out and go around to homes and lift the cover and look. And they have a series of tags or stickers or something that actually tell people if you did a good job or not. This is, this is without this. This is the card that went out as a mailer to tell everybody. But they also announced way in advance that they would be doing these inspections. And they said that Dartmouth and New Bedford and Abington, because of these public awareness programs, have really done a good job in cleaning up their acts with solid waste. So it was a good meeting.
Let's move on.
I have just two, two very brief things, just for folks who may not know, also for Town Administrator Aaron Steen. A couple of weeks ago, we had a meeting regarding the Green Communities Committee and the Green Communities Program. I apologize, you hadn't started yet. But it was great. We had representatives from Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources here. We had Serpide because we got the technical assistance grant. So we're moving and grooving on that. We will have potential, you know, meetings coming up and everything, so we'll all get on the same page with that. And then we also, last week or the week before, and again, I apologize because you hadn't started then, we had a meeting regarding the Agricultural Commission with Serpide again. The purpose of that, for anyone watching, because it wasn't recorded, I do apologize, was to discuss and kind of get the opening steps and everybody on the same page for the process of how we're going to go about forming the Agricultural Commission and also getting the Right to Farm Bylaw hashed out and hopefully, in my opinion, passed at an annual town meeting. So that was great. And I will work, you know, with you. I've given you the documents and everything and I would love to work with you on it. I've given you the same documents. So sometime after January, you know, end of the month, because I know you'll have your budget and everything to work on. But, but we'll get, you know, all of our ducks in a row for how we're going to go about getting everything hashed out. Everyone has concerns and their own things that they think are going to work for the actual final language of the bylaws. So we'll get that all hashed out together.
And then the Agricultural Commission, I just want to thank everybody that's come forward and volunteered.
I know.
I passed a name of a local businessman who stopped me in the parking lot last week to let me know. I definitely want to serve on that commission. And I said, I'll let Brett know.
We actually have to turn people away.
Well, we have to decide if residency is.
That's, that's true. But the thing that I find cool is, for example, no shade, but we, it was tough to find people to fill the schools building study committee and then that's not going to be like a fun committee, but it's important job.
What do you mean it's not going to be a fun committee?
It could be a lot of fun.
Talking about shade.
That's how you recruit people, you know? Tell them it's not going to be any fun. Gee. If any of you are listening out there, they're on that committee, it'll be fun.
Brett's on a roll tonight, folks.
Are you done?
Well, I just wanted to say, we have received an outpouring of interest for the Agricultural Commission and we have not formed it yet, people. So we will be eventually soliciting applications. We've saved everything.
We have a good range too, because we actually have instructors from the Aggie School who are residents who are interested. So, and business people and it's really good.
And we'll get back with you on those.
We brought them in the loop, so they're going to, the Bristol Aggie School will now be in those discussions as well.
I just want to bring one thing up. We've been, the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen have requested to come to our meeting next week to talk about the school roof, so that might be interesting. So, now I know you had invited Dr. Azar.
I never got a response.
No, I think.
He probably, I would have said.
Well, let me just, I don't think, I don't think we want to invite him.
What?
Well, not because of him, but, well, because they want to meet with us. And it's such a touchy thing. So I think, I think we'll meet, we should meet with them, unless you think.
Fine with me. No, it's fine with me.
Yeah, okay.
I got the impression they're showing up anyway, so.
Well, they're going to come. You know, I think it's a good thing. I talked, I talked to Helen, the town administrator over there, and, and they were going to write us a letter, but they figured, in response to our letter, but they said, that's kind of foolish. Let's just sit down and talk about it. So I think that's a much better.
And if you're going to support the roof, Rehoboth Board of Selectmen, you don't need to write the letter. Just be there when it matters.
So you had a meeting last week. I wasn't at it. The rack, you, you did the rack thing. Was it Thursday night?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't go to the meeting in Rehoboth because I got home late, quite frankly, but what, was there anything to report from that?
Well, we, we met with the school committee and, you know, we, we went over all the, the input from, in the tentative agreement that they want us to adopt.
Which I emailed you.
Right. That was from the original rack committee, wasn't it?
No, this, this is the latest one.
That was the task force, the regional amendment task force.
Oh, okay.
So we went down through all the changes and they just explained them. And most of them are just fine. There's, there is a couple of things that I think we'll need to discuss. And the, the big thing is, we didn't get to this because they weren't at the meeting, but the allocation process and.
Statutory or alternative?
Well, alternative. And I'm not sure why, I don't want to be closed-minded about it, but I'm not sure why we would want to go that route. But, and, and the biggest thing that I had, I had concern about was the, the allocation of the central office. They want to split it 50/50. And, you know, in my experience with doing budgets and allocating costs, there's usually a basis for allocation and it's not 50/50. Generally, you take cost centers and the size of the cost center, whatever you want to evaluate it on, either the wages they produce or the money they spend or whatever, you allocate overhead, which is what this is, out to those, those cost centers that way.
And I can tell you, going back to when we were a nine to 12 regional school district and a school union, 5%, the first 5% was allocated to the town of Gosnell because that's what Gosnell said they would pay, period. Whether they had one kid or three kids at Cutty Hunt. But after that, you took the 95% and it was allocated according to pupil enrollment.
Right.
Berkeley-Dyton, Rehoboth, or Berkeley-Dyton-Freetown way back when. And then the regional high school was separate. But you, then you truly have something to allocate it to, you know, so.
I mean, there are, the argument is that, you know, for example, the superintendent, it doesn't matter how many students he has, he's, he's, he's got two principals, he's got the principal at the high school, he's got two principals in each of the towns for the other schools, so equal amount of time. But I, I don't, I think, you know, if it comes right down to it, you have more students, you're going to have more issues. It might come to superintendent.
That's what I was thinking.
So that's, that's a point we're going to have to have more discussion about. And, and then the other thing is, they, the, the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen met that night by themselves because they want a different, they don't want to, want to go with the, what do you call it, the mandated allocation?
Alternative?
No, they want an alternative.
Oh, they want to go statutory.
The statutory. So we, we don't know.
So you're saying is they don't want to comply with what the elected officials who are supposed to deal with the schools think is best. Is that correct?
Well, they, well, they're elected officials too. They're doing, they, they want to do what they.
They're not elected on the school committee.
No, but they have to approve the regional agreement.
Correct.
Okay.
Which means they have to work with the school committee to come to a compromise and us.
Yeah, and I'm not saying they're not willing to do that. I'm just trying to tell you what's going on. We, I'm not going to second guess what they want to do. I don't know what they want to do.
Well, we can't know because they didn't show up for the meeting.
Okay, yeah, but we'll, we'll get to that.
But if that.
They're coming, not, this is about the roof. We're not going to talk about the, that. So I don't want to disparage.
The regional agreement, if you totally left that allocation out and just said, we will follow state law, it's statutory or it's alter.
But there is, but there is, but there is a provision in there that towns can come up with an alternative form of what they want.
But the whole thing is, even though if it's in the agreement, it's got to be voted every year by the member towns. So it's also going to be approved. Process in there.
It's also going to be approved by Department of Education, so.
But I just don't, my, my whole thing, I'm just talking about the process and strategically. What good is it for them to have meetings amongst themselves? We have to sign the agreement too.
But it's not final yet. They want to meet this.
So this isn't even on the agenda, so let's just move on. And if we'd like to talk.
I'm just trying to give you enough. I just want to talk about the meeting next week, so.
I have two quick comments, two of the boards said on this particular.
I don't think.
Not, not, not on that.
Not on the allocation.
On the roof, which is coming up next week.
Let's hear about the roof.
We, I followed up with the Facilities Director when in terms of vacation. We have air quality and mold testing taking place during the vacation. However, I'm requiring all the HVAC systems to stay on normal function. I don't want them to go on vacation or a callback. So they all agreed to that and I'll be in communication with them during the holiday vacation.
So you're saying all schools or just the high school?
The, the high school and.
Or the other schools, okay.
I asked for all three of our schools.
Okay.
Good work. And then secondly, Slack McGoolard, you were at the MMA meeting in January. As you know, a few department heads have historically attended that. I know that we have a town administrator now, Mallory's involved. I'd like to still hope that some of those.
Yeah, I mean, what could I would say now?
It's, it's open to, Mary and Sue have gone in the past. Mary has an obligation with her elderly mother on Fridays. And I think Sue's got some kind of a family commitment. But we do have people from Dayton signed up, ready to go. It was mentioned at the meeting we were at today, the solid waste meeting, to get people to go, so, yeah.
It's extremely, it's extremely important and I just would hope.
I think we, I think people could, I think department heads can make those decisions. I want to, like to move on because we're really running away.
I just want to make one statement. Anytime any sort of professional development is involved, you will always get an okay from me. You don't need to check with me.
They just have that money in their budget, that's all.
That's my thing. Just can you pay for it? Go ahead, yeah.
Okay. We have an acknowledgement of an anonymous donation to Primetime.
Thank you.
Do we get these, we, we get this, I'm assuming it's probably from the same person, but. This is from Sheila, the Assistant Program Director at Dayton Council on Aging. And we're pleased to inform you that the Primetime has received a donation, the amount of $30. As usual, all donations are turned over to the town accountant and deposited in the Primetime Gift and Donation Account.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the acknowledgement of an anonymous donation to Primetime in the amount of $30.
Second.
Okay, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for that donation, whoever you are. Okay, approval of minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the executive session from November 8th, 2017.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approval of warrants?
Mr. Chairman, I moved at warrant 24A-18 in the amount of $88,741.25 payroll. Warrant 24B-18 in the amount of $346,169.35. And warrant 24C-18 in the amount of $53. The last two being accounts payable, all dated December 13th, be approved. Second. Well, that was the first.
Right, yeah. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Anything else?
Anything else? Anybody?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye. Public, there is on this agenda that may have been circulated, executive session. There is actually no executive session meeting. That was from an.
Did you, Ms. Higgins? We're adjourned, cable. Can you get that?